Good evening, everyone.
Sorry about that.
Everyone, no worries. Good evening, everyone. This is Tim Johnson. I call this a regular meeting of the Major Excess and Oversight Committee to Order. We're conducting this meeting via teleconference and is being recorded. The agenda for the meeting is on the city's website at www.santa-anna.org. Members of the public will have the opportunity to address the to address the Major Excess and Oversight Committee regarding agenda and non-agenda items during the public comment section of the meeting. Even though we're not physically meeting together, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance wherever you are. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. All right, excellent. And if we could, Kristen, if you could go ahead and call roll, so we know who is all here.
Okay, Councilmember Louis is excused. Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Councilmember, committee member, committee member Lugo.
Here.
Committee Member Pereira.
Here.
Vice Chair Landa Verdi.
Here.
Chair Johnson.
And I'm here also.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. So this will be the time for the public to make any comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Kristen, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? I'm not seeing any on my side here, but.
We do not.
All right, very good. And like we have in the past, if someone maybe comes on, we'll we'll give them an opportunity to 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 comment if they're running a little bit late here and we don't have time, so. And let's see, so our our first item on the on the agenda is the is the consent calendar, which is just of one item, the approval of the minutes from the September nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Do do any of any of us have any any edits or comments on the minutes? If not, entertain a motion.
No comments in our motion.
Excellent. I'll go ahead and second that motion. So Kristen, if you could please call the roll.
Lugo.
Yeah.
Pereira.
Hi.
Vice Chair Landa Verdi.
Hi.
Chair Johnson.
It's a I for me also.
Motion passes.
All right, excellent. And so the next item is agenda item number two on the business calendar, which is the Major X Agreed Upon Procedures Report. And so I'm assuming that it looks like we have a couple really smart looking CPAs on 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 the in in my squares here. So I'll let you guys take it away.
And Kristen, it looks like my screen sharing is disabled. I have the icon, but it's disabled. Okay, I got it. And let's see here, it's this one. Share that. All right. Yeah, good. There. Okay, Daphne, all you.
Good evening, my own. I'm on right. Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the committee. I'm Daphne Munoz, the principal at Clifton, Larson, Allen, and I am here tonight to present the results so far agreed upon proceed or not, the examination of management's assertion on measure X revenues and expenses. Next slide, please. Just a brief introduction as to who we are. We are again Clifton Larson Allen. We are a national firm. And we are a CPA consultant and advisory firm. We were engaged. This engagement is going to be serviced for from our Irvine office and that focuses on audits of governmental entities. And we are also the auditors for the financial statement audit for the city of Santa Ana for the fiscal year ended June thirty twenty twenty-two. The scope of our engagement is we perform an examination of the management's assertion regarding compliance of revenue of expenditures, measure X expenditures with the and we've agreed the revenues and then uses of expenditures identified by management to supporting documents, the source and supporting documents. Next slide, please. So for the year ended June thirty two thousand and twenty-two, total measure X revenues as detailed in the schedule total eighty-six million, while total measure X uses and expenditures are sixty-four million. The results, next slide, please. So first of all, I would like to say that our examination does not provide legal determination of the city's compliance with the requirements of measure X. However, in our opinion, the management's assertion that the schedule for the fiscal year under June thirty two thousand and twenty-two is accurate that this end that the city's uses and it's uses and expenditures of measure X funds complied with the requirements of measure measure X ballot language are fairly stated in all material respects. And that really is just my presentation. Just it's very brief. As you can see, our report is is pretty short. And with that out, turn it over for any questions, or I don't know if Alex is doing the presentation next to me. Next.
Excellent. Thank you, Daphne. So you you have, were you gonna go? You're not gonna go through your your actual report, is that right?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So do we have a, I'm just gonna do a quick walk around. I'm gonna try to do it in the same order each time on this evening. So I'm gonna start with with Alonso first.
Daphne, quick question. So it was there a statement in regards to the delta between revenue and expenditures?
Daphne, you're immune.
Yes. So in this statement, it shows how much was the total like total revenues and then the total actual expenditures and how much was how much was added to the reserves, which is really the difference between the total the measure X revenues and the actual of sixty-four million. So the the delta between the total, I think your your question is the delta between the total revenue of eighty-six million, that's the revenue, the total expenses during the year of sixty-four, which resulted to a difference of twenty-one point nine that was added to the reserves of the measure T measure X fund.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
See, how about Carlos next?
Yes, just for just for clarification on the on on those twenty-one million that were added to the the reserve, that means that they went to the reserve of the general to the general fund or or reserve as the city's reserves?
I believe that is sitting in the measure X measure X fund, which is part of the measure of the general fund as in in aggregate.
Thank you. That's that's.
I'm gonna ask a quick follow-up question to to Kat on that. So Daphne said that it's a major X fund within the the reserve. Is there actually a major X fund or it's just all one fund?
It's all in the general fund.
Very good.
It added to the general fund reserve and and we've got information on that later in Alex's presentation.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. And Vice Chair Landa Verde.
I have no comments, but thank you, Daphne.
Yeah, excellent. And yeah, I think thanks, Daphne, for the presentation. I know it's a kind of a short add-on to your to your regular audited statements for the city, but it's important for 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 this committee. So I appreciate it. And I especially appreciate the, you know, the as a as a fellow CPA, that the notes to the financial statement are usually, you know, where a lot of the meat's at. And, you know, can kind of bring into to light the, you know, the twenty-two point six million of that sixty sixty-four million dollars is in unrestricted. And that's where you know, the the they kind of CLA kind of, well, actually, I guess there is still the the city's statement. So is where where the city is kind of explaining where that twenty-two point six million went to outside of the this, you know, this in the general fund section. So that's really important to to look at. But beyond that, I don't think I have any any. Well, actually, I did have one question unrelated to this, but quasi-related. Is the is the city's financial statements, are those completed yet? Have those been issued?
Yes.
Okay, when were those issued?
Maybe it was issued December twenty-ninth.
Okay, awesome. And that's relatively. I mean, it's not the the fastest issuance, right? But it's not. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, you're in the governmental agency group. So there's probably some cities that are still still lagging behind. Is that is that right? Like, where are we? Where are we at in kind of the?
That is correct. I am working on some of them. That are still on extension. So.
It's a little bit later than normal for us. Usually, we try to shoot to, you know, shoot for something like, you know, December seventh through the fifteenth or something like that. We'll call it the second week of December. So it is a little bit later for us, and there's actually a very good reason for it. Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Eighty-seven with regard to leases. We had to do a whole lot of extra work this year for that. And and then not only did we have to do all the extra work, but Daphne and her team had to do a lot of extra review related to Gatsby Statement Eighty-seven. So it was it was a monster to implement. And so it put most cities behind on what would be their normal schedule. So we're just pleased that we got ours issued by December thirty-first. There's a lot of cities that are not as fortunate as we are to have a really good accounting division.
Yeah, and I think that that's my 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 point of, you know, I think our city is always done a really, it feels like it's done a really good job in terms of of getting prompt financial information out into into the public's hands. So, you know, Kat, your team, as well as the CLA team, really should be commended for that. I know, you know, both both your groups don't get the kudos that you that that, you know, come along with that. But I'm sure Daphne's got some long, long evenings ahead of her. So but that's that that's it for 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 me on this area. So obviously, both you you can stay stay on if you want, or you can get on to your other 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 clients, whatever your preference is. So thank you very much, Daphne.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. So then our next next item is item number three, which is our 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 major X sales tax update. And I know someone's gonna be doing that. I'm not sure who it is. So. Oh, that's our other. There we go. Okay, there's Brad. Perfect.
Good evening, Chair Johnson and members. Pleasure to be with you again. Fran Mancia. I'm the Vice President of Government Relations from Uni Services and Avenue Company. You know, for me, measure X is near and dear to my heart, having been around from the very inception, working to go through the process of getting it to the voters and in helping to to work on it from that perspective. So it's it's great to be with you. Happy to report, we have very good news. It's really remarkable numbers that we'll we'll share with you. If we go to the next slide, please, that would be great. And just wanted to start on a more macro level and looking at California in terms of taxable sales. And what you'll see here is the projected and the changes going back to fiscal year fourteen fifteen statewide. If you look to the bottom right on the second column for twenty-one twenty-two, the state's at nine hundred and thirty-six billion. It's ten percent ahead of trend, and you can see it's basically a hundred and thirty-one billion more than it was a year ago. So the state's revenues and sales tax are growing dramatically. So having said that, this governor just released his budget just this recently, and, you know, he's worried about and projecting, and I think he's probably right, and may even get more severe down the road. Twenty-two point five billion overall budget deficit in the sales tax arena. The state is expecting a two point five billion lower than projection in terms of sales tax revenues. So I wanted to share that. However, when it comes to measure X, the concerns at the state level don't reflect in your numbers. And if we go to the next slide, I'd like to give you a comparison to Santa Ana's transaction use tax measure in other regions, but also putting a little bit of historical perspective on it. You know, as we all know, from twenty nineteen through today, we've been through a pandemic. We've seen fiscal stimulus money. We've seen COVID. We've seen quite a bit. So this chart is trying to give a reminder to everybody that we've been through quite a journey over the last several years. And I'd like to bring your attention to this, the gray line that says Santa Ana T U T one and a half percent. Obviously, the first period of reporting was in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty. And this is a quarter over quarter percent change comparison. And you can see eighteen point six percent, fifteen percent. And then during the the depths of the COVID resurgence, you were only you were still up point five percent. And you can see many other parts of the state were all in the negatives. Then dramatic growth as the stimulus money came across all the way out to today where we're starting to flatten out again, you know, with with inflation and and the increase in interest rates. But what's notable to me is there was not one quarter over quarter where you had a decline in revenue, continued to grow despite all the the things that were going on over the last several years. So it's quite commendable in terms of how Santa Ana's transaction use taxes performed going forward, just to give you that perspective. And if we go to the next slide, just to talk about this one a little bit, you know, statewide. You know, as we said, state revenues are up about ten percent. They've recovered above the trend.
Battery one hundred.
Post COVID nineteen. And I think some of the key recovery spots that have been really positive shouldn't be too much surprise. Restaurants are big. People are back out in eating and dining. E-commerce has done extremely well. And this was the AB one forty-seven Wayfair impact. This was the requirement that was passed and the Supreme Court validated. The third-party sellers from out of state would have to collect and remit sales use tax to jurisdictions in California when it was voluntary before. And that's been a significant driver. So if you order something from out of state, they are going to add on that that one one and a half percent for for Santa Ana to that order before it's shipped and delivered, rather than the consumer who receives it voluntarily complying, which really didn't work, obviously. The other big one is service stations. It's sort of a blessing and a curse. As gas prices go up, you're getting one and a half percent on the price of gasoline. So it it's good for revenues, obviously not so good as consumers. So we're seeing that. And we're starting to see auto sales are starting to come back a bit more. We're seeing more inventory. There's more chips available. So we're starting to see that as a positive impact as well. In terms of drugstores, that's a category that the CDTFA uses. That's where cannabis revenues are included. We're seeing statewide cannabis revenues are still going along, but they're declining as a general rule. So we pointed that out. In apparel and building materials continue to be strong categories as well. Next slide, please. So just in terms of measure X, I know you'll see some of these numbers for the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two, about eighty-six million dollars was collected. For perspective, there's about four hundred and fifty district taxes levied across the state. Some jurisdictions have more than one. They may have a dedicated one dedicated for public safety, general purpose, things like that. Of course, it's administered by CDTFA. And just as a reminder, this is a destination-based sourcing versus point-of-sale, which means that the tax goes to where the product is delivered or received. Next slide, please, would give a bit of an illustration. And it's different from the traditional Bradley Burns. So if a vehicle is purchased in Santa Ana by a non-resident, you will not receive the one and a half measure X revenues, but you would still get the traditional Bradley Burns revenue. But but like from the flip side, if a resident of Santa Ana buys a car in Costa Mesa, you'll receive one and a half percent on that because they're taking ownership and to the residents or business in Santa Ana. And then businesses purchased online by cities or businesses, you receive revenue on that. And then, of course, local retail, if it's purchased out of store in the city, you'll get the tax on both. So little bit different way of collecting and remitting. Just wanted to remind you of how that works since our last meeting. And next page, please. So just in terms of performance, this gives kind of a a quarter over quarter comparison. So this would be looking at third quarter twenty twenty-two sales compared to the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. And these are broader categories. So for that particular quarter, third quarter, there was about twenty-three twenty-one million, two hundred and thirty thousand collected, which was a four point six percent quarter over quarter increase from the same quarter a year ago. General retail, as you can see by the brown line, was down just a bit. Food products was up five point four percent. And food products includes restaurants and other food consumable products like that. And of course, transportation was up eight point six percent. That that includes auto sales as well as gas sales in that broad category. And then construction was up ten point five percent and business-to-business twelve point three. So across broad sections, you've done extremely well with with measure X in the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-two. And next page, please. So, you know, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but and I know we used this one in our last meeting, but just want to put inflation on the table for a moment. You know, inflation in in terms of economics sometimes is misused, especially as it relates to sales and use tax. What we're seeing is inflation may be impactful in certain areas. So food products are definitely, prices are up. But generally, a lot of the food products are non-taxable, so it doesn't have as direct an impact on your measure X revenues. So I just wanted to put that out. But we're really more affected by relative price changes driven by supply and demand and things that impact the markets. Gas prices is probably the most dramatic one. In this case, supplies and demands have changed the prices up and down. So just just for for a perspective, and as we get to the forecast a little bit further down, you know, we're not as concerned about inflation and recession impacting your sales tax revenue. It's gonna be more of a flattening, not as much of a rise, but we're not seeing a decline for measure X. So just want to share that. Yeah, if we can go to the next page, please, that kind of helps highlight it. So what was really driving pricing packs for taxable goods in July was very different from what it was in December, which we'll show you in the next page. In July, energy prices were definitely driving the the increase in revenues of thirty-two point nine percent. Obviously, prices for gas in July were much higher. We've started to see prices come back down on gasoline since that time. So that was really a big driver of the revenues in July. If we go to the next one, please, December, very different story. The big driver was food. As we all know, prices of food and tax, some taxable and others not, has increased by ten to ten point four percent. Much bigger, and it's outpacing energy prices right now. So, you know, in six months, we've seen a very big shift in where the price causes are and the impacts from that. So just to give that as perspective. And that comes from the US Department of Labor. So just in terms of Santa Ana's annual adjusted revenues adjusted for inflation, we have the blue line, which is the net annual sales. And the the red line is the constant dollars. You can see when this started back in twenty twenty Q one, receiving in in the adjusted in that annual sales taxes about fifty-nine million. Today, we're up to over eighty-seven million. So it's a pretty dramatic increase in a couple of year period of time. It's one of the fastest growing transaction use taxes that I'm aware of, and we work with a lot of jurisdictions that have them. So it's quite successful and quite commendable how well it's doing for the city. Excuse me, the next page, please. And this is just a per capita adjustment. So to the far right, you can see the per capita is about two hundred and twenty-nine. It's up quite a bit from when we met in the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. The red box boxes is general retail, just up a slight bit. Food products is up four dollars. Transportation is up the most, up to fifty-two. Again, gas prices, car sales have impacted that category quite a bit. And then miscellaneous is up a few dollars as well. So good news, your per cap annual per capita sales taxes adjusted for inflation continues to to do very well. Next slide, this one is similar to the earlier slide, but we thought this might be interesting to show, compare Santa Ana's transaction use tax to other transaction use taxes in your area. And these are clients that we work with. So for example, the LA MTA, you can see your, they've had some negative periods, but some bigger numbers. You know, you fared extremely well in comparison to to the others in your region. So this is something you may want to look at a little more in depth. But again, no negatives on your numbers where you can see the other jurisdictions had various periods where there were some negative declines in their base. And so I think it's reflective of the business space in your community and also the positive impact of e-commerce transactions and purchases by your citizens and businesses. So hopefully, that's a helpful one just for perspective. And if we go to the next one, this is the the forecast that we've put together. We take it, we're taking a fairly conservative approach to forecasting right now. I think it's it's the prudent thing to do with uncertainties that are out there. As you can see, for the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two, your percent change, we were up fourteen point five percent at eighty-six million. We're pretty flat in twenty-two, twenty-three, and into the twenty-three twenty-four year. We're not showing a negative because there will, we don't feel there will be a negative, just the slower growth that you'll see there. But and then it starts to level out, and we're pretty conservative in the out years. If you look at this, it your it follows your trajectory to date, very solid numbers going going forward and out of out years. Let's see, maybe go to the next one. And this, I just want to show you some of the assumptions that we use as we forecast and look at your revenues. When we met back in last year, our assumptions in October of two thousand and twenty-one, we were really worried about unemployment of seven point five percent in September. You know, ninety-five percent of the average, we looked at GDP, as you can see there, and there was robust growth and recovery expected to continue. So as we fast forward to December of this year, you know, we were really believing that there's gonna be continued low unemployment. We're seeing energy prices starting to drop. Although we're starting to see just a bit of an increase currently. And then we work partner with the Anderson Forecast from UCLA. And, you know, we're looking at the GDP numbers, and we're seeing a slowing through the mid two thousand and twenty-three. And then some slight growth after that. So really, as I said earlier, a flattening of sales tax growth that for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-two, all the way through the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-four won't be a decline, but it'll be relatively flat. So just, you know, in summary, modest to slow growth is forecasted for the next couple of years. Low unemployment is gonna help reduce the impact and the slower overall economic growth. You know, we've heard a lot about people being laid off at Salesforce and Cisco and some of the tech companies, but those positions are being filled elsewhere and they're, you know, people are being hired over to other positions. So we're not seeing an increase there, which is a positive, of course. And then we're really focusing a lot of our time on price changes, especially around gas, diesel and jet fuel. How those might impacts revenue directly and indirectly going forward. So as a whole, I think it's a really solid numbers for measure X, despite the uncertainties of the economy and the way we're forecasting and looking at it is very conservative and seems to be pretty much on target so far. So I will stop there and thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, excellent. There's a lot of information. So we'll see if what type of questions we have. I know I'll have a few. But we'll start in the same the the same order here. So Alonso, if you if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Johnson. Fran.
Hey.
Hey, great presentation. Easy to follow. I appreciate, you know, the breakdown and the way you laid it out. It was very you know, well, well, well presented, I should say. One thing that I keyed off on that I wanted to help understand was you had mentioned that the state of California, the governor is preparing to report out a deficit in revenue for this coming fiscal year. Yet our dollars projected revenue for this coming fiscal year and the years to follow are all positive and trending forward. Can you tell me, yeah, or I guess for myself and for the general public, help me understand what exactly the governor is saying, the why behind you know, a decrease in revenue and the why behind that decrease statewide not affecting Santa Ana's measure X dollars?
First of all, that's a really, really great question. Just looking at the state budget, you know, a lot of my work is in government relations in Sacramento where I'm based. Part of the state budget is they're being extremely conservative. They're worried about the narrowness of the tax base. So the state has problems for for sales tax because they're so reliant on personal income taxes and things that are directly driven from capital gains and things. And I know Chair Johnson certainly understands a lot of this from being a CPA. So that's number one. The state has also put a lot of money into reserves, probably more so than they have in decades. So they're kind of preparing for this downturn a little bit. But to get more specific to your question, your your business space is tied into the city of Santa Ana. So you have a lot of population. People are purchasing things on the internet. You have a very diverse business space, whether it's retail, business-to-business, and things of that nature. So you're very robust. The state has impacted more because parts of the state are doing extremely well, but other parts of the overall state dollars may not be. So for example, something in the inland empire may not be doing as well as a coastal city. So they have to look at their revenues in the totality of the economy of the whole state. So they're impacted more so dramatically by areas that may not be performing as well, where Santa Ana, you're just performing overall much better. So that's, I think, the best answer I can give you is the diversification of your business base, your concentration versus the state where some parts are doing much better than others across across the entire state.
I understand. Thank you, Fran.
Bet.
All right, excellent. Let's see, that would now be Member Pereira. Carlos.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, and thank you, Fran, for the for the presentation. I really appreciate also the visuals and to really understand and I like the landscape. I had a not not a question, but maybe hopefully a a request. I really, it really helped to see the 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 measures on your sales tax adjustment for inflation. And I'm also seeing, you know, and looking at the projection and the forecast of On, on to twenty twenty eight, twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, it looks like the font is set to, to, to increase. So if I request, if we can see that also that the forecast can I, I adjusted to like perhaps projected or some inflation just to see. Also relatively, you know, how much those dollars really, really are going to be worth and how much we're gonna, you know, really see the. The funding, the dollar power will have, just to still have, you know. You, you know, there's a difference between seeing if the forecast and the amount of money, but also we had to account for like what that money will be worth later on.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really good point, Carlos. I, I think that makes a lot of sense. The other thing just on the forecast, especially in the outer years, we'd be, we always have been very conservative because. What's happening today, it's really hard to know what's going to happen in five or six years. Um, so we're very cautious about that. And, but I like your idea about adjusting for inflation. We. We can certainly do some forecasting around that in the out years for the future. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you then. Those are, those are my, my, my comments.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, thanks. And Vice Chair Landeverde, you're up.
Uh, no questions, but just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to be with us today, Fran. Like everyone else said, we appreciate you taking the time to put this together and it was very detailed. And it's good to know that our city is still doing good and we're on track to hopefully, you know. Keep succeeding, even though with all the obstacles that we've been facing. So thank you for that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, um, I have a, a couple of questions for Fran. First, again, you know, excellent, excellent information, uh, not only for, for, for me is being on this committee, but just in general. Also, it's, uh, it's, it's, you know, if I was not on this committee, uh, I would still find this very interesting, which maybe says more about me than anything else, but. The, um, uh, now, Cat, I don't know if you want to put up, um, put up this, the slide, um, but on the presentation, the California taxable sales by region. Uh, the, his first, uh, your, your first, uh. You know, kind of table, um, I believe. And so is working, are we comparing apples to apples on this one, though, in terms of? Cause this is our, uh, T, T and UT, which is, um, the major X taxable sales, which would be. A destination based versus, and then are we comparing that against, um, I'm presuming. Everyone else's point of sale, um, uh, uh, basis on, on this one, is that?
That's great question. No, great question. No, this would be based, so obviously not everyone has a T, a TUT. So what we've taken is the TUTs that we know about across the state and put them into the bucket. So for the Bay Area, those are the percentages. For jurisdictions there. So this one, that's why we wanted to have that more specific second slide. So you can see apples to apples. Cause you know, this doesn't tell you how many there are in the South Coast, for example, or in the inland empire. So. It just kind of, and it's more meant to give you the trends that we're seeing in those areas, whereas the second one is trying to be specific apple to apple.
Yeah.
That, yeah, here we go. This, this meant to be, to provide, provide you that more granular comparison share.
Okay, perfect. And, um, I mean, I'm, um, I'm assuming that, um. Let's see, Wes, um, on, on this particular slide here. So, you know, anytime I see, I mean, like you take Santa Ana at a positive. Five and a half percent, and then you have an outlier of Westminster with a negative five. Is that? Due to their, um, cause I think that they actually phased out, um, am I thinking the right city on that? They actually phased out their. Uh, uh, their district tax here. At one point, I think they've re reinstated it.
Yeah, they've had, I think that's correct. I'm not a hundred percent certain off the top, if that's the case there, um. I'm just drawing a blank, but I think that could very well be. The other thing I would note, though, for someone like Orange County O C T A. There's up, um, L A M T A's is up at a higher level because they're so large, um, the, you know, we can say that also for. Riverside County and Bart and places we also work, because they cover such a larger area where there's a lot of concentration they're doing. Their, their numbers tend to grow a bit more, but I, I think you're probably right on Westminster and certainly double check it. Um. Um, but there is, there's been some phasing out there and their base is smaller than yours as well. That's the other piece.
Okay, and, um, I mean, you can't kind of alluded to my next kind of question on here. I mean, how, how do we? How did, like, what's the differential between, and I'm not taking percentages or dollars, but just in, uh, spending habits between. You know, so Santa Ana is, is trailing, I think every year. To O C T A, um, is that, uh, is that a measurement discrepancy or is it a, a spending discrepancy? Cause it may feel like we have a pretty good base here in Santa Ana, and then you compare to these, the, the two transit authorities in, in L A and O C. And I think every year we're trailing, uh, behind them with the exception of maybe the, the, it looks like that one quarter that, uh. The, the cursor is going over, uh, but especially recently, we're trailing behind, behind, uh, them.
Yeah, so I think that, no, great question. I think if you look at Orange County O C T A in the twenty twenty Q one and Q two, you'll see that they were down. Pretty dramatically, eighteen percent, eleven percent. They were really impacted dramatically by the pandemic starting because. They, you know, when you look at something that large, their retail shut down completely. Um, they're hit by Disneyland closing, places like that. They capture revenues from some of those things because. The transit agencies are also destination based similar to, to you, to you. So they, they were impacted pretty dramatically, as you can see at the beginning of the pandemic, but then they. They roared back with a vengeance as those places opened up, as you can see going across, um.
So essentially they have a bigger peak in a valley and so was, so their valley is bigger. So then their recovery is going to be quicker also.
Correct, whereas you've been more steady Eddie with a nice rise all the way across.
Right, okay. Um, and it does, uh, you know, the, the slide, um, let's see, I think you're gonna go, if you go backwards towards the front, uh, a few cat. On the, the nice chart where we're going Bradley Burns versus major X. There you go. And so are we, um, you know, cannibalize? Do, does major X like a positive, a major X, is that cannibalized Bradley Burns? So, uh, meaning that. Hey, it's great. We, we're running more on the online purchases. But then that means that we don't get the, the Bradley Burns mathematically. I mean, I, you know, this group is for major on the major X side, but that increase on the major X is, is offset by. You know, one percent decrease on for Bradley Burns on a tax rate. Is that, would that be?
Yeah.
Oversimplification of it?
Yeah, there's a great question. So there are really two taxes. You're Ben, you're getting revenues from the traditional Bradley Burns. And it does not impact the measure X. So you, so for example, if you're purchasing something, let's say at Joe's. Tire shop, you buy some tires, they're going to charge you the one percent Bradley Burns, but they're also going to charge you the one point five percent measure X. So in essence, it's a total of two point five percent. So. One does not take away from the other. They're on top of each other. So that's the, that's the positive there. And that's, that's why I always encourage jurisdictions when they're looking at revenue. Ways to find more revenue to consider a special transaction use tax, because in my view, you get the best of two worlds. You're. You're capturing the other pieces, you're capturing all the e-commerce transactions, online sales by residents and businesses in the city of Santa Ana. Whereas under Bradley Burns, you only get a small portion of those online sales based on a kind of arcane, archaic formula where you get a percentage. Of the countywide number based on your total number percentage of the sales throughout the county. So let's say you. You generate ten percent of all the taxable sales in Orange County, you would only get ten percent of the countywide pool. Under Bradley Burns, so you get a fraction, whereas you are going to get a hundred percent of the purchases by. Your residents under measure X. So you're getting the best of two worlds, um.
I was just gonna say Fran, that, um, you know, it's not really completely accurate to say no, nothing for Bradley Burns for goods purchased online. It's just comes to us in a roundabout way and it's watered down because it goes through the pool. So.
And, and does that, does the county pool number, and I may be confusing, um, you know. Local allocations of property taxes versus local allocation of county pool. Um, so is the county pool, is that, does that number ver, does it change every, every year? Uh, or, okay, so the property tax one is the one that is.
Correct.
Even more of an archaic system that was kind of set in stone like twenty five years, thirty years ago.
Yes, exactly. In fact, the Bradley Burns changes every quarter. So they base it on the total sales. So for the third quarter. They'll reconfigure it. So you may have ten percent this quarter and the next quarter, it may increase to ten point two. So it's based on the sales and readjust it every quarter. So within the pool, it's, let's say Etsy or Wayfair, amazon.com services, amazon.com. And there's a, a long list of, 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 um, transactions are put in the pool.
Okay. And so the, really the only cannibalization would be if, you know, taking your, your example of Joe's tire shop. So if, if, if someone were to. You know, move from purchasing at Joe's tire, tire shop, you know, on Main Street, uh, in Santa Ana to purchasing it. From, uh, tires dot com, for example. Um, and that would, um, maybe not a perfect example, because I think most of those, you actually go to the tire shop to pick up, but, um, we'll carry it through. But, uh, so if you have a shift from purchasing brick and mortar to where you, you, the city would be, uh, getting. Uh, both one percent and one point, point five. And then if it goes purely to an online order, then we're getting the one point five percent for, for major X. Um, and then our share of the county pool, which may or may not be proportionate.
Right. So, so if you bought it from tires dot com and you took delivery at your home in Santa Ana, city would get the one point five, they would add it on to, to that transaction.
Got it. To the, um, is there, uh. And, you know, obviously auto sales and we have a auto, um, an auto mall and inside the, the city. Um, and we also have a auto rebate program. I think it's still, still in play. Um. Is there, um, any way that, um, you know, from what you, what you kind of do for the city? Are you able to see it? Is that? Is that a good program? Is it paint, is it paint off? Is it providing incremental, uh, incremental, uh, major X revenue?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't really know the answer offhand. Maybe Kat would refer to that. I know we've looked at those things in the past off, offhand. I don't really have. Not really involved in the particulars of that program to, to answer that.
So basically Fran, the rebate is that if you are a Santa Ana resident and you go to a Santa Ana dealership. You can get a five hundred dollar rebate by purch- purchasing your car. So the thing is. I, I think that in public discussions, you know, amongst the city council members and with their constituents. I think that they've kind of, uh, portrayed it that you're getting a rebate rebate of the tax that you paid. But the truth is that even if they go buy a car outside the city, they're gonna pay. The, the tax.
Right.
So it, it's kind of, it, it's a little bit, it's a little bit odd, I think. More than anything, I just think that it gives, um, our dealerships an incentive to sell more cars to our residents.
Yeah.
So.
Which is still a good thing though, right? Because we get both Bradley Burns and MX, all right?
Correct. If, if the car is purchased by residents of your city or businesses within the city, uh, you'll get both.
Right.
But, and I can't thank you for the reminder. I do recall the, the program. So I, I think you, you explained it exactly right. It, it does incentivize the local dealership. So from that perspective, I think that's a good thing.
Did Kat, does a, um. Uh, is, is your department provide any, um, you know, and obviously this is a small thing, I think, but, um. You know, so we're talking dozens of dollars and compared to the millions here, but, um, I mean, is that something that you guys, you know, provide any? Guidance on or, or, or what have you? Because I'm assuming that there's going to be a time that that's going to be maybe back. I don't know if there was an expiration to it, or maybe it just carries on forever. But, um.
I thought there was an expiration to it and I'm thinking that it may have already expired. Alex, do you remember?
I'm not aware that it's expired, but we did have this program in last fiscal year, fiscal year twenty two. But we could find out if, if, if it's something that's going to be like recurring, but.
Well, maybe, maybe if you could just see what, if it has expired, when expired, and if it's not, you know, maybe when, when it will expire. Um, just because I'd imagine that it might be something that we want to look at in terms of effectiveness. But.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Tim, sorry to interrupt. If I remember correctly, it wasn't tied to time, it was tied to a dollar amount.
Hmm.
So, you know, as rebate reaching X amount of dollars, then it was going to be relooked at and reinstated. It was a. Program worth we've seen.
Okay.
We'll dig into it and follow up with the committee and give you the details.
Um, and, um, you know, uh, um. I don't know if this is for Kat or for Fran, but is there, and I kind of alluded to, um, in an email to Kat a few weeks ago, but is there any way to tell how much slippage we have? Uh, on the sales tax, uh, you know, essentially in the income tax, we'd say, you know, it's a tax gap, but you know, essentially, um, uh, you know, untaxed sales from. Like food merchants that are not, um, you know, not registered with the county. And so therefore they're probably not registered with the, with the state for, uh. Uh, for, for selling taxable food. Um, and is there any way to tell? Um, Fran, obviously you have a lot of data in, uh, to, to where, you know, even though yes, we're up, you know, seventeen percent Q over Q. You know, how much, how much tax gap we have on that, uh, type of industry?
Great, great question. You know, that, that's a report we've done over the years extensively. We've done what we call capture gap leakage studies where. We, we formulate some assumptions around all of this. So. We assume that's X percent, for example, of people are going outside the city to purchase cars or to purchase things. A lot of it has to do with what businesses do you have in your community versus not. And it's been used a lot by economic development to try to help hone in on areas where we could improve these. Perhaps we should be trying to pursue these type of businesses to, to come to our city and things of that nature. And that doesn't make sense because there's a similar one right across the city line. So. We've done a lot of capture analysis, leakage analysis, uh, for cities over the years, and that's something we can certainly provide. We haven't done a lot of those recently, but I think it's becoming more relevant as the economy kind of levels out. So the answer is we can provide information like that, yes.
Um, uh, obviously this committee had, doesn't have any ability to direct you to do that type of, type of work, but, uh, uh, Kat, do you have any idea, like, is there? I mean, are we talking such small things here? And I, I mean, obviously I'm, I'm kind of more coming from a perspective of. Hey, if we're not able to get them registered for, you know, business tax, because they can't get registered with the county health department. You know, then therefore they're probably not reg, you know, charging a remedial sales tax and. You know, or is it from the pure dollar side and the tax side, is this a, uh, a, any sort of, uh. Material type, uh, item, or is it just so small this night and it's like. It, it, it wouldn't be worth like for, for your department to say, hey, guys, we really have some leakage here.
Uh, I, I mean, I, I will talk to Fran about, you know, what that might look like to get a leakage analysis done. Um, but my, I think there's money to be had, no doubt. But when you're talking about like these little pop-up vendors or whatever. It, it's hard to say whether it's a really tiny amount of money or, or not. I mean, it would be easy to say, oh, that's small potatoes. It's just a little pop-up, but. In some instances, it may not be. There's some, there's some vendors, I think, that are doing very, very well on the city sidewalks. And the, it poses all kinds of problems because even if we could get them, you know, uh, they get their county health permit. And we, you know, they, they comply with the city's laws and they start paying the city's business tax and everything. The nature of their business, I, I mean, I'm sorry to say it. I'm just going to be candid. I think it's worse than cannabis as far as trying to. You know, put your thumb on it and, and get an accurate number out of that business model. For obvious reasons, I'm sure you can think of, you know, being cash basis and the way that the transactions are done and such. Um, so there may be some money to be had there, but it, it's. Then you have to look at cost benefit analysis like, okay, you know, let's say that I'm just making up numbers for fun. So let's say that there's a million dollars of tax to be had out of it. You know, a million dollars is a million dollars. That's something that might be worthwhile going after. But if it costs me seven or eight hundred thousand to go after that million, and then I'm going to have diminishing returns after that. Um, yeah, maybe not so much. So it's, it's definitely something to explore and think about more.
Right. And, and just to, to clarify, a lot of the analysis we currently do are on a broader segment. But so here's an industrial type of category. Industry that you might want to bring in, not so much perhaps the, the pop-up vendor that Kat described, but. What are good industries that might complement our business space? So it's a little more broad than that than drilling down. Uh, transient businesses are always a challenge, no matter what, to, uh, to bring into compliance. So I, I definitely want to clarify a little on that. Cause that's, that's been a prep, a challenge for cities for decades and, uh, certainly something we have to continue to look at.
Excellent. Um, all right. This is my, let me, I think that was my last of the questions. Oh, I'm sorry, one more. Um, so on, I, I, I really appreciate your, uh, I don't know what this is, uh, maybe a seven year future, you know, your projection, your forecast. Um, and so if I'm looking at this right and just mathematically, so, um, you're twenty eight, twenty nine, that would be our la, I think that's either last or next to last year of our full one and a half percent.
That's a good point. Yes, I think that's probably why we went that far out, um, with the, the analysis. I don't recall a thing, but that sounds about right. Kat probably knows offhand for sure, but that's the reason we went to that number.
Yep, March thirty first, twenty twenty nine is the last day that we collect one and a half percent.
Yeah, then it has the, the reduction, yeah.
Okay, so you, you probably already have, like, you might have one quarter maybe of, of the reduction in there. Uh, but so like, if I mean, let's just assume that the hundred and four million is. Uh, but so like, if I mean, let's just assume that the hundred and four million is the um is, you know, full one and a half percent taxes for for easy math. So I think mathematically, when we have a decrease from one and a half to to one percent, if my math is right, and maybe Kat, I mean, I know that you guys are kind of looking at this in your department. Were we looking about a thirty-five million dollar uh decrease? Is that?
Exactly correct.
Okay.
And that's that's why I did the pension uh refi project, because I was able to at least narrow that gap by about half by doing that one ace up my sleeve, but I don't have any of uh anymore of those big aces up my sleeve. So.
Wait a minute, you get four, you have four aces.
Yeah, so to 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 close that gap further, it's it's going to be the super hard work with with small returns.
Okay, yeah. Um, well, I mean, I'd a um. It'll it'll be interesting to see what we can do to chip that down. I mean, I I am, as I've said kind of before, you know, hoping that we can save some of these, especially these increases, to be able to help smooth out that that uh plan future decrease, because that's a that's a big chunk, and this is a I mean, a hundred million dollars, that's a, that's a uh, you know, this is a, you know, definitely city-changing type numbers. And thirty-five million to the downside is uh, you know, is going to be a tough one to 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 swallow, so. Um, all right, I thi- I think that's it. That's it for for me, Fran. I really appreciate the um the the presentation as always. Um, so a- and also for keeping uh Kat and her department um always apprised where, you know, if they're going to be making mid-year changes and all that type of stuff. Um, it's uh super important for our city not to be waiting until, you know, the end of the year is to be either either go up or down, so, yeah.
Well, thank you for having me, Chair and Members. It's a pleasure to be with you. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Um, so let's see, that was, I think, item number, number three, and so now we are on to item number four, I believe, on the revenue update. I'm assuming that's you, Alex.
Yeah, that's me, Chair Johnson. Okay, so good evening, committee members. So I'll be providing you with a brief update on our measure X revenues for the most recent quarter. Uh, next slide. So this is the summary of total receipts received for the three months for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So this will be for total receipts from July through the month of September. So we did receive the total of twenty-two million net of P D T F A P uh for the first first quarter of this fiscal year. As you can see on the chart, the city receives estimated advances throughout the year, and it's cleaned up cleaned up or basically trued up every three months. So the for the peak for September twenty twenty-three is a cleanup for the first quarter that was received in November. Uh, so month one and two, so basically July and August are advances based on state estimates. Uh, next slide.
And I'm sorry, I just noticed this. Our chart has has twenty-ones in it instead of twenty uh twenty-twos. But.
Sorry for that, should be twenty twenty-two.
Yep, no worries. Just uh, we we just know this is the correct uh numbers here. We just have, we just didn't update those dates. Sorry about that. I.
Yeah, it's usually us tax people that are always a year behind, so I'm I'm glad that uh uh we're not alone in that, so.
So so this is a comparison between prior fiscal year, so twenty-one, twenty-two, and our current year, twenty twenty-three. So the periods that we're covering is July and September. So the net increase compared to the prior period is uh one point two percent. So this represents a six percent increase. Uh, so this increase is lower than in previous years. Also, part of the reason for this increase has to do with trickling revenues from prior periods. Uh, so the segments segments that performed well during this quarter include general retail, transportation, uh, construction and business to business. Uh, next slide. So this slide summarizes using the reforming period versus our actual receipts uh received. So as you can see in the chart, when comparing quarter three, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, so there seems to be a leveling of revenues. So this is a fourth year of measure X revenues. And historically, we've seen increases on an annual basis. Uh, some of the reasons for this increase is include the wafer decision that our self-tax consultant Fran mentioned. And and also another reason is reduced restrictions due to COVID nineteen, so allowing for an increase in economic activity and various business techniques. Um, but we don't anticipate substantial increases in self-tax revenue for this fiscal year or or for next fiscal year. Uh, there is still going ongoing concerns related to inflation and potential recession, so we don't know the impact of that to our revenues, if any. Uh, but as data comes in, we'll provide additional information. Uh, next slide. So the estimated revenues for uh the total estimated revenues of eighty-eight point one million for measure X remain unchanged for this fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. Uh, based on most recent data, we are not recommending any changes to the estimate revenues for Bradley Burns or for measure X. So the next step is to provide a mid-year budget report to city council in February. Uh, we don't anticipate any major adjustments to the general fund. Uh, the main focus will be support adjustments to include administrative type of changes and also adjustments to revenues for other uh sources of revenue, so non-general fund. So this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
And one thing I want to add, because I know that Tim has a sharp eye and and probably some of other, our other committee members may have noticed it as well. You know, in Fran's presentation, he showed the estimate for measure X as being a little bit less than our budget estimate. So remember that we get um quarterly information from Avenue Insights. And we we may get that information from us, from them, but we own the budget, meaning that we make the decisions about what it is that we're going to put in our budget. And the last three quarters uh of of this updated information that we've received from Avenue Insights, it it's been a little bit of a roller coaster ride. And so we've done initial initial additional analysis outside of what Avenue Insights has provided us. We've used some resources from you know, somewhat another consultant in the state that provides sales tax data. And combining those two resources, we've made a judgment call and we're holding on our budget estimate right now. Because um right after we put together our budget for this current fiscal year, we got an update from Avenue Insights that would have had us circling the wagons and taking the estimate way down. And then the very next quarter, it went way up. And and so I'm I'm very, I'm I'm a little bit sensitive to that um because we have been a little bit on a roller coaster ride, and so I'm trying to use other resources and temper my decision about what we do with our budget estimate. And so that's why right now I'm holding on our budget estimate when Fran's latest number is is a few hundred thousand less than our budget estimate, but I have other information that makes me feel good that our budget estimate should still stand. So I'll leave it at that. If that makes sense.
Excellent.
It does, thank you.
Yeah, that's good, good insight um for sure. Uh, member, member Lugo, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, how about uh member Priya? Any questions, comments?
No.
And uh, by share land of every.
Nope, thanks, Alex.
Yeah, it's uh excellent, Alex. I appreciate it. I think I'm I'm good also. Um. And so I think that will take us to uh item number five, if I if I'm following along here correctly, which is our uh, the annual report of revenue and expenditures. Um, and so um, I'm assuming that Kat, you're you, this is your your area, and maybe you can kind of give us what our, remind us what our responsibilities are and and the purpose and some of that type of stuff also.
Yeah, so we've actually got this broken up into two pieces. Number five is the the annual report that we just wrapped up. And so Alex is going to give you an overview of that annual report, and then we'll move on to number six, which is is me kind of providing some additional information and then some thoughts for the committee on preparing your recommendations. Alex, did you want me to put uh the annual report up on the screen? You do? Yes, okay. Well, this will just take me a second. Bear with me.
And and while you're doing that, Alex, is this, is this a report uh from from your department or is it a report from us, from from the major X uh committee to to the council, or is it from?
It's it's from our department.
Okay, that that's what I thought. Um, so. Excellent, thank you.
Ah, yes, this is it. All right, and then you can just um give me guidance on how you want me to scroll once I have this up on the screen, Alex. Um, and there.
By the way, we did uh post this report on the city website, so it is under the finance and the report, so we have that available. Again, we also uploaded the A U P, the Freedom Fund Procedures from uh the orders that they went over, so that's available on on the city website. Um, so good evening again, committee members. So I'll be walking you over our annual report for revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two. So just a reminder, you know, fiscal year starts from July through the month of June. So the first pages of the report, um, the first sections of the report discusses background on measure X. So I'm just going to provide you kind of like a brief summary of what measure X is. Those those first two pages of the report. So basically, um November twenty eighteen voters approved um approved measure X, which which is the city services and has measured. So measure X is a local self-tax of one and a half percent. So the va- valid measure calls for maintaining effective nine-one-one response, retaining firefighters, uh, police officers, addressing homelessness, fixing streets, uh maintaining parks, youth and senior services, unrestricted general revenue purposes. In addition, we also include a brief explanation as to how the measure X is and oversight committee works and the purposes of this committee. So the main focus of this committee is to act in an advisory role to city council. Uh, in addition, this includes to review summaries of quarterly year-to-date revenue generated, review budgeted to actual expenditures on a quarterly basis and preparation of the annual report to the city council. So this is usually done during the uh March meeting. So we did add item six, as Director Downs mentioned, to have a discussion on the budget recommendations for the city council. So on page three of the report, so this includes the summary of measure X received during the fiscal year. So the city then received a total of eighty-six million dollars uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Revenue exceeded revised projected uh projections of eighty-four point two million, so this is like a one point eight million dollars uh over our revised budget. So the year-over-year increase was a fifteen percent compared to the prior year. The increase was largely due to reduced restrictions because of COVID nineteen. Um, on page four of the report, we adopted our original budget of eighty-eight point million dollars for measure X. Uh, this is for the current fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So this accounts for approximately twenty-three percent of the general fund revenue. Uh, the committee has recommended to city council in the past to focus on one-time spending uh due to the eventual sunset of measure X. So this, uh, looking at the chart, it does show the importance on focusing on one-time spending versus recurring. Uh, on the bottom of page four and also page five, uh, the report provides a high-level summary of total measure measure X expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So there was a total expenditures of sixty-four million for program expenditures, while adding twenty-two million to its general fund reserves. So the main reason for the increase to the reserves was to recently add a project during the fiscal year. So this was during the major report. Uh, typically, to um to get projects up and running, it requires time for staff to prepare a project. Uh, so that includes design, also getting bids from contractors. So out of the twenty-two million, thirteen point nine million of that of the budget is for carryovers for amounts that have been committed and not yet expended as of June twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. So these projects or items will likely be completed during the current fiscal year uh twenty twenty-three. So the major expenditures for the unrestricted general revenue, you know, include uh eleven point seven million dollars uh for prior year deficits and employee compensation increases for non-safety employees. Uh, other areas include funding for the San Ana Regional Transportation Center. So this includes a year like yearly subsidy. Uh, one-time funding is also for maintenance. Uh, there's other uh cost and they're including point eight million for business interruption fund program, as well as point eight million dollars for subsidy to support downtown business activity. Um, there is point seven million dollars for the vehicle and sets-in programs that we discussed earlier.
I'll maybe move to like a deep, more detail. Which which, where do you want me, where do you want me to be?
Oh, uh, page five, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, if you scroll a little bit um in the bottom. Actually, maybe page four, sorry. Right there. So that's actually between four and five on the unrestricted general revenue purpose.
Gotcha. Okay, sorry.
So. Yeah, so there is also four point eight million dollars for other programs. So some of these programs include like legal defense for dreamers and parents, increased costs related to zoo contracts and supplies, and also increasing graffiti payment programs. So on page five of the report, we do provide a summary where the sixty-four millions was used. I want right there, yep. Uh, so in addition, it includes a breakdown of the remaining twenty-two million. So you could see uh thirteen point nine around there was carried over, and we did add additional reserve to to the general fund of eight point one. So lastly, the page, the last page of the report, so page five, so before the exhibit, so this includes a summary by fiscal year showing total revenue expenditures. So through fiscal year twenty twenty-two, the city has received a total of two hundred and thirty-six million dollars for measure X. Of this, we spent a total of a hundred eighty-eight million, so total additional reserves of forty-eight point two million. Um, on exhibit one, so this provides a detailed level information for measure X expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. In addition, it provides the summary of total revenues and corresponding expenditures. So the main areas of expenditure during this year included addressing homelessness, uh which includes public safety, uh park maintenance and repairs, increase for Orange County Fire Authority, and funding for additional police officers. Uh, exhibit two is um it provides expenditures again at that line item detail, but it includes uh all the fiscal years. So uh, this includes from beginning from eighteen nineteen through now. So this includes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
I apologize for being all over the place. I'm sorry.
No problem. We've got to look at things three different ways on the same data, so. So sometimes helpful. Um, all right, folks, uh, let's uh uh, so again, this is the report that the uh finance finance group gives to the council, so uh, you know, the the they have ownership of it. Um, and but uh obviously we can speak into it and give you feedback or 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 good question, you know, see questions and answers on it. So we're going to go in the same uh same order as before. So uh, member Lugo.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Chair Johnson. Um. Alex, thank you for the presentation. I got to admit, it's just a lot of um data or process. I did not have an opportunity to look over this before our meeting. Uh, but I don't have any outright questions at this time. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, and uh, member Priya.
No questions, man. Thank you.
Excellent. And uh, by share Lenda Verde, that means you're up.
No questions from me either. Thanks, Alex, again. This was really helpful. Let me guys take your time doing this, so we do really appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I ha- I have to say that, you know, I don't have any questions, but just a comment. I mean, I think that the language, you know, the the just, I mean, we all love our numbers, right? Our tables and all that type of stuff. I I feel like the the language is uh especially as we have uh some new new folks on the the Council of Dias, the new mayor. I mean, I feel like the just the language, you guys really just ni- hit 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 it with that, hit it with your uh, the background. Um, you know, this is not the easiest stuff to understand. Um, I quasi live in this, and I feel like I ask some of the same questions every every time here uh to Fran. Um, so I I think you guys, you you've done a great job um on explaining it. The only thing that I just, I I know I always kind of go, oh, what what's the, you know, kind of what uh what uh member Lugo initially asked the otters? Well, what's the difference between the eighty-six million and sixty-four? And you know, that that uh, you know, this is general fund is just adding to the general fund. If it's not a separate, you know, measure X fund, it's, you know, and and that type of stuff, it it that's the only thing I would look at this and go, oh. You know, Measure X fund is, you know, and and that type of stuff, it it that's the only thing I would look at this and go, oh, boy, um. So, but anyway, I think you you, you know, good job on it, so uh I don't think I have any have have any other questions. Um I did just notice this spelling error, if you want me to tell you who it's at, but uh if it's been published, uh uh.
I noticed it too, in that table addition.
Addition is, yes. That's funny, we both saw the exact same thing, I mean, I'm scrolling it on my screen, and it's like, oh, gosh, um but yeah, um, so anyway. So we always have to put some one error in it, just to make sure that people read it, so.
Thank you for that. That's the Easter egg, right?
That's right, that's right, yes, yeah, it's same same reason why you have to go to the the very last page now, because you just don't know if there's anything on the. You know, the trailers, the trailer follow-up, so uh but anyway. Um, all right, so that's uh that concludes uh item number five. Um number six, um which does not have a uh any attachments, I don't think in our uh in in our packet. Um but that's the, uh no, I take that back, I think we we do have a uh, is there a presentation on this? Is this what the, I think I have a PowerPoint.
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and put it up, I I sent the uh, or I had Kristen send out the presentation, I think, what, yesterday or something?
Right.
Kristen, yeah. Um, let me just uh get myself set up here, okay, so I I figured it would be good to kind of summarize where you guys are at. And I'm a big fan of, you know, trying different things, so. You know, first year, you you had a very big report to council and and they didn't comment. And then the next year, you know, okay, we shortened it down to one page. And and you know, there there wasn't any real comment or discussion from the council, even though we. Presented these during their, you know, during their budget workshops and everything, and so, you know, I thought, well. But you know, let's let's open up the opportunity to try something different yet again, to to see if there's a potential for some additional traction. If you will, so that's what this agenda item is about. Um and I want to just run through a few things for you, so I have this updated general fund ten-year outlook. Um it includes recurring amounts, so I took out the one-time stuff, so that's not in there. And the California Department of Finance has um currently. A projection of three point two percent annual C P I increase for the next X number of years. So I went ahead and just used that, you know, because, you know, instead of pulling a number out of my own pocket, I figured I would use what the. California Department of Finance is using. Um the debt payoffs that are coming up over the next several years, tho- those are included in on this. And then, of course, the Measure X rate decrease, which you can really see um in fiscal year. Uh you know, we're on twenty twenty nine, between fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine, twenty nine, thirty. Um you can see that that green line, which is your revenue line, takes a dip there, and and now all of a sudden you have an upside-down budget. You're spending more than what you take in, and this is all based on existing service levels. So what this outlook does not include are impacts of recession. Um you know, I've been listening to the economists and, you know, everybody believes that recession is coming. Um but they think that it's might be just more of a little blip, you know, as opposed to like a deep recession or whatnot. And the that's part of the reason why the city has such a strong reserve. I mean, we've got an eighteen percent general fund reserve, it's a good amount of money. And and so if the recession is a little bit, a little bit of a blip, like a lot of the economists are saying, then, you know, we're we might be fine. Um but this suffices to say I did not include any assumptions in here about impact of recession. Um and then there is no employee compensation increases in excess of the five million that we allocated in the current budget. So if, you know, because I know they're back at the negotiation table with the Police Officers Association and some of the other groups. Um if those negotiated increases come in in excess of the five million dollars that we set aside. Well, that's not reflected here, so let's let's hope that it stays within that five million that we allocated. And then, of course, this, because this uh model is based on existing service levels, it doesn't include any new services that the city council might want to add in the future. So you can see that for the bottom line is for the first uh seven years, this year and the next six, you know, we. We hum along pretty pretty well-balanced if if nothing um estrange happens. Or huge recession or or huge service level increases by the council. Um and then, obviously, in twenty twenty nine, we we've got a problem that we need to deal with, so. The good news is we did close a portion of that gap, just not the whole thing. And so it 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 will take some work to close that gap uh going forward, no doubt. Um so this is a current year general fund summary, this was included with the first quarter budget report that was approved by. Received and approved by the city council on November fifteenth. Um so you can see that we had our original budget here, we thought we were gonna come in at ninety seven million for beginning fund balance. And and have some revenue and our appropriations, and so we estimated that our ending fund balance might be at about seventy six million. Now, this is at the time that the budget was adopted, so May-June timeline. And then, of course, the eighteen percent reserve requirement, seventy million dollars there leaves us with an estimated spendable of six million dollars. Well, we came along with this first quarter report, and we had some adjustments, so one, we know now that our uh beginning. Uh balance at July first twenty twenty two is is a bit higher than what we were expected, and that's partly because of the. Money that Measure X added to it, so we did talk about the twenty two million that was the delta between the revenues and the expenditures for last year. Um but keep in mind that of that twenty two million, thirteen million of it is just carried over to the next budget. So all it is is just a delay in spending, and so what in truth, what really truly got added to the general fund reserve. Was was eight million and some change, and so that's part of what you see here with the sixteen million more. Than what we thought we were gonna have back when the budget was adopted, and so now we know that our beginning balance is more like one hundred and thirteen million, one. Hundred and thirteen point five million. And so we um increased our oven uh revenue estimate slightly, that was related to um. Uh some fees, because we were bringing some services in from another fund into the general fund, so we brought in both the revenue side and the expenditure side. That's all that was, we didn't change any estimates in the first quarter for any of our uh general fund revenues. And then we had some uh spending adjustments, recommended spending that uh the city council approved. And so um when you figure all that in, it leaves us with an estimated ending fund balance of ninety million. At the end of the current fiscal year, and again, we have that seventy million dollar requirement, eighteen percent of. Eighteen percent of revenue, so when your revenue increases by fourteen twenty, your reserve increases by two hundred and fifty five thousand, right? So still a seventy million dollar reserve requirement, so that leaves us almost twenty million dollars that's available for spending. And so what I did here was I included a little quote from uh the staff report. Uh where, you know, considering effects of of the pending risk of pending recession, and again, we've discussed that, we don't know what that's gonna look like. It might be small, might be deep, nobody really has that crystal ball, and the cannabis tax rate reductions that the city council approved. Um we don't recommend any further appropriations from the available nineteen point nine million. Uh and part of the reason that we don't is because the city does have a commitment to fund thirteen million dollars for. Uh the third and Broadway development project, so if we just hang on to our nineteen point nine million of spendable. We end up using thirteen million for Third and Broadway, then we'll be back down in that neighborhood of having. Six million dollars of spendable money, and of course, my advice to council on this is always that this is one-time money. So if they're gonna spend from that six million, I would I would certainly um recommend that they find some one-time spending, not adding recurring expenditures. So last year, your your recommendations went to city council during their May twelfth uh budget workshop. Um the full text, because you guys did have more text than what you see here, it was included in the city council's agenda packet on May twelfth. So what you're looking at here is just an image from the PowerPoint where we tried to summarize it for PowerPoint purposes. Um but it's just a reminder of what your recommendations were last year. And then we have our budget calendar here, uh this budget calendar was approved by city council on the uh December twentieth. It is subject to change, um but this is where we're at right now, and I put some arrows in there. I think those are your opportune dates to present committee recommendations to city council. Now, the last couple of years, your recommendations have gone to city council during these made budget workshops. But since you're meeting today and you have another meeting on. Uh your next meeting is coming up, well, I have that on the next slide. Um you might want to consider pushing pushing some recommendations forward to this March twenty first. Budget policy discussion, this is where the city council gives us some early uh direction on the budget. And that might be an opportunity for you to to try to put some recommendations on on that one. Um while they're giving us those those that early direction. And then, um so the your resources, in your agenda packet, you received the annual report that um I just scrolled through. In a crazy manner, and Alex tried to uh uh summarize orally. And then you also received your revenue update and certainly revi- uh information from Fran as well. In this presentation that we just ran through, you've got an updated general fund ten-year outlook. And you've got that summary from the first quarter budget report and the budget calendar. Keep in mind that your next committee meeting is currently scheduled for March eighth. And so I would recommend to the committee tonight that you go ahead, this is the the most important thing you do every year. Is provide these recommendations to city council, besides making sure that, you know, we've crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is, and that's important, too. As part of your oversight role, but um you know, is to go ahead and discuss your desired format, process and timeline for this year. And and I'm just throwing it out there, consider crafting some early recommendations for that March twenty first presentation, it you might get a. Eh eh I'm just gonna say it bluntly, you might get a little bit more showtime, so I think it's it's worth trying for you. And that is my presentation, and at this point, I would just turn it over to Chair Johnson to. Take the conversation from here and figure out what you guys want to do.
Excellent, I appreciate the uh um, you know, I I pulled up my. Uh word document, and it just shows uh of our last year's recommendations, and it just shows the power of your. Uh of a properly formatted uh PowerPoint slide, because, boy, it looks a lot better than the than this uh. This page with a bunch of words on it uh from last year, so um but uh, yeah, so what uh, so I think. What we really need to decide is one, you know, working on the outside of do, you know, do we want to try to shoot for that March twenty first uh. A meeting, which if we do, that means that at our March eighth meeting, we need to be uh need to be that. This almost the the outside time to where uh it needs to get put into the uh uh. The the council packet, uh assuming they might have a few days after, but um you know, we we probably can't wait until that particular. Uh meeting to then form if we want to do a subcommittee or some, you know, there's just not time for that, so um we. You know, if if our goal is to shoot for that March twenty first um. Uh uh, you know, the budget policy discussion, you know, I would, I would suggest that we might, if we, if that's our goal, which. I feel like I cut, I'm in agreement with the with Director Downs, and that, uh you know, the earlier we get in, get this into something, then. The earlier it can be, so I'm probably gonna be in favor of shooting for that March twenty first um council, the the budget, you know, to. You know, just purely a budget discussion uh dedicated to that, um you know, but if we're gonna do that, I would, I would suspect that we need to. Uh last year, we had a subcommittee um that kind of uh spoke into it, and we might uh, you know, we might want to do a subcommittee. Uh tonight, um you know, determine that, and with the goal of having a maybe a a final. Uh or a a prelim, uh you know, to be approved maybe by the by the group and maybe some edits and whatnot. Um on that March eighth date, and so that way it has time for uh to get put into the. Uh the that March twenty first uh uh budget discussion, uh so. Uh that that, if if that's what our goal is, I think that's pretty much what probably needs to happen.
Hey, Chair Johnson, this is Alonso, so. The city council and the city has not changed. Their expenditure rate between now and the projected time when the Measure X funds. Get reduced, the amount of work that was put into the previous years prior to last year. Uh putting together the recommendations that we did, um I honestly don't think need to change much, and what I'm looking at. Is, you know, pretty simple, uh let's not reinvent the wheel, I think that there may be some areas where we could improve it. Uh to be honest, what uh Director Downs did with the PowerPoint presentation to your earlier point, it just looks better. You know, it looks better because it's it's uh put together in a manner that is um uh easy to uh digest. Uh the first slide in of itself, I think, was a very powerful statement, um if I were. Uh in charge of that, what I would do is just change some of those fonts to like bold and red. So they could uh easily identify the twenty million dollar deficit that happens. Um as soon as that tax measure goes down. But I'm I'm not suggesting that we don't put any work to it, what I'm suggesting, though, is that we take what we already have and really. You know, and press upon upon the council how critical it is to um stick with. A policy that's going to reduce expenditure versus um increasing.
Yeah, I I I think I would agree with you that, you know, when I look at these five uh. Five items, Alonso, that, you know, I think all of them, and the only one I'm a little fuzzy on is number two. Uh you know, I probably would want maybe a little bit more uh speaking from the.
You're talking about the C P I increase?
Uh no, I'm sorry, uh um I on the the five items, you know, the 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 five recommendations. Uh I I I heard you kind of saying, hey, we're probably gonna end up having si- very similar recommendations, that that was kind of my, and then, uh but. You know, focusing on the ten-year outlook, uh and especially that, you know, the gap, when we have that. That one, that half percent decrease.
Yeah, twenty nine.
Yeah, twenty nine, thirty, thirty, and really, I mean, that that's really what are, you know, needs to be planning for, and I mean, obviously, Director Downs and her team. Know knows that, they're trying to cut into it now, and like she says, she, you know, used the 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 one ace she had up her sleeve, now we gotta start, you know. Uh do it, doing little things here and there to be able to chip away at it, but um, so what, I mean, is your is your recommendation then to kind of stick with? Are the five, the five recommendations we have, and then maybe fine-tune those? Uh or um and, you know, when you're saying not reinvent the wheel, is that kind of where you're 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 laying?
Yeah, yeah, I I really liked the second uh page on the deck that Director Downs put together, I like that graph a lot. Uh like I said earlier, I think I would um one hundred percent utilize that, because it's a very basic. Understanding, you know, with the inclusions and the does-not-include statement. Um it shows the discrepancy, and to tell you the truth, I'll find, I would find a way to graphically show that gap to be even wider. Just just so it looks like a tazm, you know, in comparison to how it looks on the page right now. Um I think that's a very powerful statement to start with, and then the five uh bullet points, um it may be. I I I don't think we need to keep it a hundred percent, but I'm not opposed to keeping them as is, also.
Uh what about uh uh m- member Perea, what's your, what's your kind of thought, big picture?
Yeah, I think I'm I'm good with maintaining the five recommendations that the that we have, that we had over the last year, which, yeah, haven't changed much. I think for number two, I think I'm thinking about, you know, this this concept that 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 I that I have been speaking about, community cooperatives. But it's really supporting, you know, uh you know, local like, community, you know, like local economic uh uh activity. And thinking about the situation that's happening with, you know, the the food street vendors and and other types of of vendors, people myself. Food from their homes, they might not be as visible as food vendors, but there is an economy that is happening, I think that there is. Uh you know, a lot of concerns from residents that and businesses about uh tho- that type of economic activity. But at the same time, you know, myself, I like, I love street tacos, and I know, you know, there's all this 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 idea that a lot of these businesses are from out of town. Both for the places that I go and my work, all of them are local, uh local families. All of them are local, uh, local families. And so for me, then I will narrow down more number two into, let's figure out how to work to ensure that. You know, there's the county, there's the state, how do we get folks proper permits or support them and get creative, ensuring that they are in compliance? And if there is not something specifically we can do to have them in compliance, what else can we get? Uh, what, what ideas can we, can we work with them, and I think the measure X fund is appropriate to be used to, 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 to figure something out for. For those type of food vendors and, and, and getting creative rather than, you know, I think, uh, Director Downs mentioned, you know. Trying to have folks constantly crack down on them or, or, or have court enforcement out, it's like, it's not, it's not being feasible, it's, it's gonna continue to happen. This activity is here in Santana, so I, I would like to, to see number two refine a little bit more. Uh, but I, I agree with, with keeping on this, this what we have.
What about you, Abby?
Um, yeah, I agree, um, with the member Lugo, I mean, he does make a good point and also like going back to what. Catherine said that when we presented these two in the past. There was really no comment from the city and that kind of, it's a bummer because I mean, we do put work into this and it's kind of like, oh, okay, no. Not much was said, so maybe outlining like the, the things that we really wanna. Get out there and be like, hey, this is what our concerns are and hopefully maybe we can get some different feedback from them this time around. But I agree the grass is something that, I mean, maybe seeing some more visuals for them might be a little bit better, I don't know. It's, it's, it's a good thought, so.
Yeah, and, and I want, wanted, you know, to point out that, um, so even those. Council mean, and because I, I believe I feel the same way, I'm like, gosh, why aren't they talking about this, right? But, you know, when Kat and her team is putting together all this stuff, you know, that staff response column. Uh, you know, when they're saying, hey, we agree with one time spending, and I think that, that is, uh, you know. Throughout, like with, uh, Director Downs Department and the budget workshops, I feel like that is loud and clear. Uh, uh, on that, and so even though the council may not be. You know, pushing on it, I think it's making it, what we're doing is helping, uh, you know, maybe provides, if nothing else, provide some support to. To Director Downs and her team, um, you know, to be able to say, hey, yeah, I think we're in the right direction. On this, but, um, okay, well, it kind of sounds like consensus wise. We, uh, are probably don't have a whole lot of changes, um, maybe refinement on number two. Uh, I think Carlos and myself both are in that kind of refi- refine and, 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 and number two. And, and then I, I'm in agreement with the, on the ten year outlook, I think if we can include that. And, you know, in my, you know, simple accounting mind, I'm like, you know, taking that, that gap of, uh, you know, twenty million dollars. It starts in twenty nine thirty and just putting a big red arrow going, this is what we need to solve. You know, th- this is the, if, if, if nothing else, I mean, we're gonna continue to pay the bu- city's bills, right? Uh, meaning the, 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 the city's gonna continue to pay the city's bills. But this arrow right here, this is what we need to figure out.
That's right.
And, you know, we, and, and that, that's partly, you know, one of our, um, you know, having item number three in those recommendations. The, the major X sunset stabilization fund, um, you know, or, you know, if, if nothing else, just exploring that. Uh, you know, kind of highlights that, that gap, but, so I, I, I like, um, you know, I, I, I don't think I'm, would, would. Other than maybe refining number two, so I understand it a little bit better. I thi- I think I'm still, all of these are still, still what I would want in there, and then. You know, with that graph, I don't know, like Alonso's, uh, you know, you gotta, you know, just highlight that gap. Um, and whether that's, uh, uh, through arrows or through.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is what we really need to be focusing on, and I know, you know, we're preaching to the choir to, to Director Downs and her team. Because, you know, you guys live this every day, and if there was an easy solution, you would have already done it. So.
Well, I have a suggestion for you then, and, and, um. I've heard, I've heard what you had to say. So how about for your next meeting, March eighth? We bring back a. Better looking template for you that includes the ten year outlook graphic. And, and maybe some. I'll find a way to do some other visuals or whatever, maybe, you know, work out something where you've got more of a, a, a. You know, more pow on a one page look, if you will, and then, um. Chair Johnson, do you want to maybe appoint yourself and one other as a subcommittee? To work on refining number two? And so then when you come, when we all come back together on March eighth, we can have your, your template. Based on what I heard with these comments, and you might have some updated language for number two, and then maybe the committee.
I, I, I think I would, I would prefer to do that, just because I, I feel like if I'm talking to myself on number two, I'm gonna just confuse myself. And so I, so, I mean, I would love if, um, if, uh, Carlos, um, for sure, because, I mean, this was. An, I, I don't for, for you, and I, I don't know, um, if, if I necessarily heard either Abby or Alonso. Bring that number two as a, a point of confusion or clarification on, on your guys' end, so if one. And it, it, obviously we all have to consider schedules, so, and ti- time, timeframes, but, um, so. We can have three people on a committee, it doesn't have to be three, it can be two. But we can, we can have up to three, and so if one, one of you want to be, be, uh, I'm assuming Carlos, you're okay. Uh, you're on mute.
With, with, with one, uh, one caveat that, that I'll be announcing on my, during my, uh, during, during my closing comments. But if it could happen in the next week or so, that, that will be great.
Okay. Okay, perfect, um, so let's, we'll do a, a quick, quick timeframe, um, then, then for, for Carlos, myself and. Abby and Alonso, either one of you want to join in on that?
If it's within the next week, I'll be traveling for work, so I won't be able to, to attend. But if, um, member Lugo wants to be a part of that, then.
Yeah, please include me. Yeah, please include me.
Okay, so it'll be, be, uh, Johnson, Perea and Lugo. And that, and I'll coordinate that, um, Carlos with, uh, we'll make sure we try to, uh, get that done here, um, uh, ve- very quickly. And so I'll, I'll kind of start coordinating that tomorrow. I'm assuming we can just do it over Zoom, so.
Yeah. This time next week also works for me.
Okay.
Would you like us to help you, uh, set up that Zoom meeting? Um, we don't have to be present, we can just set it up for you.
I mean, I, I, if there's no requirement for you to be there, if you want to be there, um, I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly fine, uh. I feel like, uh, over the past two years, became a pretty good, uh, pretty good at the Zoom, Zoom stuff.
Then we'll let, we'll let you handle it, one less thing for Kristen to do.
There you go. Right. So, okay, um, and then, uh, Kat, maybe if you can, uh, you know, maybe kind of put your thoughts to the ten year. Thing and see how, what that, uh, kind of looks like, um, and obviously if you want to reach out to. Uh, the three of us or the two of us that maybe, you know, before that meeting, um, that, 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 I think that would be appropriate.
Want me to try to, uh, change the scale to widen the gap visually? Cause that's what it would require, as you well know.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're changing the scale, getting rid of the white, the, uh, to, to increase the, increase the gap. Uh, visually, I, I, I do like, I think Alonso had mentioned like, hey, I think if you put the, like, cause I'm, I'm looking at some of the numbers, I'm going. Is the green always, is the revenue always the top number, or is it sometimes, does it cross over to the bottom? I think actually it would be nice if the number, and I think that's what he's alluding to, is, you know, color code the actual numbers.
Okay.
Uh, you know, especially in like, uh, when it's four seventeen and four sixteen sixteen, you know, is it always the revenue on the top number, or is it? But anyway, um.
Yeah.
And, and another way that I was kind of looking at this also when you were going over the, uh, the general fund summary, is that, hey, we're, we. You know, the spendable balance of six million, you know, after the thirteen million is. You know, and comparing that into, hey, that's only, uh, essentially, um, four months of our gap. In that first year. That we have a, that, that, that we have that, uh, that change, uh, and so, you know, you know, kind of putting that into perspective of. Uh, of, uh, you know, wh- what does that balance really mean? Um, you know, we can keep it up for four months if we don't change anything. And that's it.
Yeah.
Tim, uh, it's Kristen, I just wanted to let you guys know that I did look up when the agenda, a post for the March twenty first meeting. And it is on March fourteenth that the agenda will be posted, so we will, you know, we'll be meeting on March eighth. And, um, so it will be a very short window, I just wanted to let you guys know that.
So our, our goal will be that we, uh, that we approve our. Uh, the, the recommendations at that March eighth when, uh, uh, date then. To where, you know, any changes would just be admin- uh, ministerial type changes for, from, from your guys' side. Okay, does that sound like a, sound like a plan from everyone, for everyone? Kat, is that, um, I mean, you've been doing this longer than, than we have, um, and know what, you know, kind of works with councils and. And stuff like that.
That's why we keep trying different things, you, that's, you gotta evolve. So that's why last year we added the staff response to your recommendations, we thought, okay, maybe that'll help get more traction. So this year, let's move it up, you know, to early direction, see if that works, you know?
Excellent, all right, well, I think that, um, that, that sounds good, I, I appreciate the time, the, the timeframe, the, the timeline, I think that really helps, uh. Vi- visualize it, so. All right, so let me get back to, um, oh, actually, real quick, uh, can you? So Third and Broadway, that's a, that's a parking, that's currently a parking. Structure, if I remember correctly, is there, are we, is the city, uh, developing that, that? Uh, doing a big development project, is it a public-private partnership or?
Um, the, some time ago, as in several years ago, the city entered into a development agreement. With a, uh, local developer to put a boutique hotel at that site. And so the plan is to raise the, um, current garage, cause it's in bad condition anyway. And then, um, you know, reconnect, there's a street that was cut off or something, it might be spurgeon, I can't remember. But reconnect the street, um, you know, redo the utilities for that parcel. And get it ready for new, new construction, and so the idea would be to construct a new parking garage. With a boutique hotel on top of it. And so the city's funding commitment as part of that development agreement. Is to provide thirteen million dollars, which would be used to, um. Uh, demo the current parking garage and prepare the site for the, uh, long-term project. And the developer that the city entered into this agreement with is Caribou Industries.
Okay, excellent, and so this is not the, the YMCA across from the, the county, so it's, okay. All right, and is, does that thirteen, is that a static thirteen million, or because I think this is a project that goes back to like when Cavasos was here.
Yeah, and, and it is a static thirteen million, and in today's dollars, we think that. What the original thirteen million was to be used for, we think it's gonna cost a lot more than thirteen million, but that's all we're on.
Right, okay, yeah. All right, um, well, that, that's good, uh, goo- good information, um, let's see, where, where are we at? And, uh, so we are done with item number six, and so that is. Uh, unless anyone else has anything on that item, we're gonna move on to wrap up, uh, type stuff, and so that's the end of our business calendar. Uh, Kat or, or Alex or, uh, Kristen, is, uh, do, do y'all have any, any, uh, any final thoughts that you want to convey to us?
Kristen might have something to report about, um, speaking with the clerk's office, because you do have a couple vacancies on your committee?
Yes, we do, um, I, I, I'm sure people are aware that, uh, Lori Cargosian, um, resigned. And then we did have a vacant, um, vacancy with, uh, Michael Hernandez, so that's Ward five and two. And, um, the clerk has reached out to the council member, uh, for both those wards to, um. Have them appoint somebody new, but we are in a situation, I, I think we talked about it in the beginning, where we do need four people. No matter how many vacancies we have, or we don't have a quorum, and so right now we have five members. Five active members.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Alonso.
Who's the city council member for Ward two and Ward five?
Um, Ward five is Hernandez, um, council member Hernandez, and Ward two, uh, was, um. Uh, M- Mendoza, but it's the new council member.
Nice guys.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I have an opportunity to reach out to Hernandez, just to kind of, um. You know, put it in his ear, I, I, I'm not friends with him, but I follow him on social media, so I think it might be something I could reach out to him on.
Um, I'm sorry, Alonso, I also should probably mention that, um. Uh, terms are up now as well, we had terms of this committee that expired in December thirty first. Um, so they're, they're, uh. Um, your, the, your ward is, uh, council member Lopez. And so, um, I don't know that she ever reappointed you as well. Um, so you may need to have conversation there.
Just to be clear for everybody, the, um, until you, you are replaced with someone else. If and when that were to ever happen, you would continue to serve, I mean, obviously, this is voluntary, so you can. You can, um, you know, uh, hang it up whenever you wish, but. Uh, just because your term is expired until there is actually a, a replacement appointed, you would continue to serve.
Got it. Yeah, I think I'm in that boat. And I've actually talked to, uh, Council Member Lopez, um, I would think that she would have, uh. Mentioned anything, uh, in the positive or negative, but I've never really heard from her. So. You're set up with you guys.
What, uh, yeah, it's, uh, I guess that also brings up, uh, uh, for right now, like if there's anyone, uh, actually, you know, I'll, I'll save that. Until the, till the end. So let's, um, any, anyone else have anything?
I have no further staff comments, Alex, do you have any?
No comments for me.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go to, uh, uh, final comments from committee members, um, so we'll start with, uh, member Lugo.
Uh, nothing more than, uh, deep sense of gratitude for your time, I appreciate everybody making time to get together. For this committee, um, I see a lot of value in, uh, the Measure X Committee and, um, obviously the dollars that come into the city of San Anna. I've been a life, lifelong resident, I love the city, I'm very happy to see how it's grown, and I just hope to be, um. That it keeps growing positively and, and being a part of the community in one way or another, thank you.
Perfect, excellent, and, uh, member Perea.
Thank you, uh, Chair Johnson, and not to, not, now that we're talking about, about quorum, and I was like, oh no.
Yeah.
Not to, not to add to the quorum, to the quorum issue or challenge, but I just want to start first by saying that. I, it's been a, it's been a pleasure serving in, in, in this committee, it's been, I believe now to, almost two years now, since, since I was appointed by. Uh, Council Member Fan, um, and so it's been really great working with, with everyone here and, and, you know, the city budget, something in. My professional, uh, war side and also as a resident that I, that I really care about and, you know. Budgets are a statement of values from the city, so this is, this has been really a pleasure to be with, with, with a really good committee that, that really cares about the city. And also cares about the services, um, so with that said, I have, I have informed, uh, Council Member Fan. That I will be transitioning out of this, uh, out of the Measure X Committee. Um, you know, I really appreciate Council Member Fan appointing me, uh, reappointing me and giving me the, the opportunity to serve. Um, and I did mention to her that, uh, today was, I, I was planning for today to be my last day in the committee, but I'll. I'll finalize my, the pending business with, with, um, supporting with this. Uh, uh, drafting of, 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 of the report. Um, so that way, at least I, I find, I, I, I am without that business, I, I am not going away, uh, but I am hoping to serve. In a different capacity, uh, continue to serve the, the, the city, so you'll, you'll hear from, from me and I'll. Come occasionally to make public comment here at this committee to, to provide my input and support. But yeah, I'll be, this is my last, uh, committee meeting and I'll send a formal. Uh, email to, uh, Director Downs and, and the city, uh, uh, as well, not sure how that process looks like, but I, I'll, yeah.
Thank you very much for serving, member Perea, um, you've, you've been an excellent member of this committee. You have asked so many intelligent questions and you've had great insights, so we really enjoyed working with you, thank you.
No, I think I appreciate the staff and, and, and all the work that, that you all did, honestly, it, it feels good to know that we have. Uh, uh, you know, wonderful director, wonderful staff that is looking out for the city, so, uh, yeah, and then, ho- this will give. uh yeah, and then hope this will give enough time to uh, I I did let know Council Member Fan when with uh ahead of time, so that we hopefully uh she has an appointment uh by by the time this committee uh reconvenes again on March and and hopefully there's no quorum issue with that.
All right, great. And Vice Chair Linda Verde.
Oh my God, I'm sorry, but this is gonna be a really sad committee, cause basically I'm in the same boat as uh member Perea. Um I spoke to Council Member Ben, I know, I know. I spoke to Council Member Epinia Loza and I let him know, you know, my, my job has become more demanding and I feel like it should be someone on this committee that, you know, has the time to put the effort in, you know, and I things have been getting a little bit more on my personal side, so I do, I do apologize that, you know, both both of us are leaving and, you know, we're leaving you guys. But I know, I'm sorry, Catherine.
That's okay, but thank, thank you so much for your service too. We've really enjoyed working with you and you you've just been such a delight to talk to. I mean, for after a long day at work and then you you know, it might be very easy to say, oh, now we have a committee meeting to to uh serve and and you've just made it very delightful. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Catherine. Yeah, I mean, it was a pleasure to be able to start like our OGs that are still here. I mean, honestly, I I appreciate being able to get this going and we've done, I feel like, a great job for our city and um I hope that that continues. You know, when I have time, I will definitely hop in onto the calls and, you know, listen in because our city, I mean, at the end of the day, if we don't do something about it, it's just it's just gonna, you know, fall apart. So um thank you, guys. Thank you for always putting so much work. Um member Perea, Chair um Johnson, member Lugo, I, all of your guys' knowledge put together. I've learned so much from this committee and and it's been great. So thank you.
All right, excellent. Wow, okay, well, that's a, that that's a, uh I mean, you guys have both been, both both Abby and Carlos, it's been great to get to know you uh in this capacity. Uh so I mean, you know, thanks, Abby, you've been here since day one. Uh Carlos, uh not there, not not too far thereafter, if I recall correctly. Uh and and uh obviously, you brought something to this uh committee uh from the personal level that uh no one else has ever brought to any, any uh in any city, city committee before. So um it's a, you know, it's great for for our city. Um and you both will be be missed and your 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 dedication to this committee is is much appreciated for from my side and I'm sure from from everyone else's and um and whatnot. So but yeah, we will uh you know, I know I'm gonna shoot off a couple emails. It sounds like uh Alonso, you will also uh to 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 kind of encourage uh encourage uh our our council members to uh to understand the uh the urgency behind this, because let's see if my math is correct. Um we would not have uh any chance of a quorum. Uh it without, without at least having one more appointed person. So Alonso, hopefully you don't have any uh planned vacations for March eighth. Uh because the likelihood of a hundred percent of the council members appointing someone in the next uh uh mu- mu- month, a month and a half is uh historically pretty low.
Yeah.
If I, if I could give you some dates, just so that um you can keep your, keep your eye on this. Um the two opportunities that the city council would have to appoint some members are February seventh and February twenty-first. The February seventh meeting, the agenda walks out the door on January thirty-first. The February twenty-first meeting, the agenda walks out the door on the fourteenth. And so um obviously, you know, it'd be best for the the council members to have their selections in before the day that the agenda is posted. Um so those are the kind of dates that you're looking at in order to to have a uh, you know, more members on March eighth.
And
Oh, sorry.
I I was just gonna say, I would maybe encourage both the Abby and Carlos, if you, if you know anyone that is especially in your ward, because that's what, you know, we're kind of supposed to try to cat have this by by board, so we're we're spread across and representation wise, if you have anyone that, you know, the, you know, I think you should feel free to make those recommendations to the both the council member and maybe even poke uh poke poke the person that you might think would be a good person. Um so.
Definitely, well, especially now finding out that member Perea is also leaving, I'll make sure to push my council memberman to find someone soon, cause he knows and you know, I I feel like he, he just needs to, you know, step it up, but I got you, guys. I'm gonna make sure he finds someone.
Right, excellent.
And uh Abby, Carlos, this is Alonso. Sorry to interrupt, guys. I just wanted to say thank you. You guys are awesome. Great knowing, great knowing you, great working with you. I look forward to catching you in the city one day.
Yeah. Thank you. And if I'm, I'll, I'll do, I'll I'll poke for my in uh council member Vaskas. I I I I know him very well, so I'll I'll hopefully I can make some recommendations too.
Yeah, that that'd be great. Appreciate it. Um okay, well, um you know, again, th- thanks for 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 Alex, for your time. Uh presentations and Kat, as always, for for the dedication that you put into to to this this committee as well as uh uh the city overall and 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 uh Kristen for for always uh keeping us on track and making sure that we're always able to to keep this thing uh, keep this thing moving. Um and
This will be my last meeting too.
That was good, that was good.
I hope not.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you wish, Kristen.
Well, I I I was gonna make a joke uh for 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 Alex and Kat, but you know, hey, just think of all the budget money you're saving by not having two people on payroll. But oh, whoops, I guess that's uh, yeah.
Yeah, the worst corny joke is to tell you, inform you guys that you all got a hundred percent raise this year.
Yeah, double, double the salary, yes.
That's so funny.
So, um, all right, well, excellent. Um I think uh that's unless anyone else has anything to say. Um I think we uh can consider this meeting adjourned. Uh oh, I'm sorry, one one other thing. Uh uh Kristen, can you do me a a favor? And I don't wanna repeat, you know, put folks's uh individual emails out over the wave. So can you send me both Carlos's uh email as well as Alonso's emails, please?
Yes, I will.
Way I can, I can connect with them um uh tomorrow. That'd be great.
Uh okay.
So uh if nothing else, um we can consider this adjourned and we'll be back uh for our regularly scheduled meeting on March eighth at six o'clock.
Good night.
Hi, everyone.
Awesome.
Bye, take care.